Are you, uh, ready? Is it, are we, are we live? All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we proceed, I want to make a motion to add, since this is a regular meeting, there was something that left off inadvertently, because we had a special meeting before and got on one agenda but not the other, so I'm gonna add, make a motion that we add correspondence and public input to this, to this agenda tonight. So, second? Any comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, next order of business is correspondence. And I don't believe we've had any, any late letters or any correspondence come in. Next item is public input. Floor is open in case anybody has any comments this evening.
This is for the, I'm sorry, for the charter, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I understand, uh, we're going to be talking once again about the four-year term for, uh, for, so, for the Selectmen Board.
Possibly.
And I would just like to say that I am totally against it because this has been put before the people have had the before, and the people have had the pack turned it down. And as I was thinking about this, you know, it's getting harder and harder, for whatever reason, to get the people of any town to come out and vote. You know, and, and with the municipal, you have municipal elections, then you have a presidential, then you have municipal, and then you have gubernatorial. And when you, if you, when you take away, for that one municipal election, the Board of Selectmen, I'm telling you right now, that the people you'll get to come out, just for boards and commissions, will be nil and none. And I think it's horrible. I have never not voted in an election in my life, but I think continuity is important, and I think that the, you know, you're going to have the people who are running for four-year terms in each municipal election, and so to have the, the head of our ticket there with the rest of the boards and commissions, I think is very important. And, you know, and I also went online, and the only town I could find who had somebody with four years is Ridgefield. Everyone else is two years, mayors and selectmen, so I don't know why we have to be following Ridgefield. I, I think what we have here works, and I'd like to see it stay the same.
Did you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kitty Grant, twenty-three Frank Street.
Um, okay, I'll go this way and the-
Cynthia, four-oh-nine-teen, Elgin Avenue. So, um, sort of dovetailing into what Kitty said, but for different reasons, I, I'm puzzled that, um, well, first of all, here's something from the News Times article that talked about it, that, "A plan to get Selectmen four years in office was rejected, but the idea is not quite dead. The Charter Revision Commission tossed the idea aside, but Selectmen could ask the group to reconsider the proposal." First Selectman Nickabacher said he plans to argue for four-year terms. This is a modernization that needs to happen. And I've heard you, Mr. Nickabacher referred to in the past, that the town being form of government is in some ways antiquated, and that a modernization would be to move towards another, um, type of government. I've also heard the, the learning curve, um, argument, and here's what I say about that. The learning curve, if you're elected, it's not, it's not a learning curve. If you've been elected five times, that's the reward for doing a good job, is to be reelected. So, two years, okay, I'm pretty sure Mr. Nickabacher knows, knows the ropes by now, and that's the reward. If you keep getting reelected, you could wind up being in office for a long time. It grapes a little bit that it's, it's almost like the patient is pretty much dead, and the paddles keep coming out, you know, and like, I think it's time to call the time of death. It's not, it's not even viable. Last time, you had the support of the Charter Revision Commission. This time, you don't, and you're still pushing it, and it seems to be a one-man push, and the, the last, I don't remember when the meeting was, where the, there is no video of the meeting, where the public input was taken up by Mr. Nickabacher, making his case for the four-year term. Let's just call it a day, you know? Put the horse back in the barn, shut the door, turn out the lights. Thank you.
Yes.
Public input, can you talk about anything?
Well, yeah, hopefully, hopefully. I mean, do you have a recipe to share, or?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just about the Charter Revision.
Yeah, just, yeah, this is, yeah. And so, your name, name for the record, please?
David Klon, nine Elizabeth Street, Upper Connecticut. Charter Revision Commission rejected a four-year term. Now, if only one person's fighting that, that is Mr. Nickabacher, I'm sure I can understand by reading the newspaper. They rejected it, and they said, "No." So, my question to you is, what part of "no" don't you understand?
It's not a debate.
Well, we're, we're not having a dialogue. I appreciate your comment.
Okay, I just, just didn't understand why you-
Well, if you'd like to call, you know-
Why they go through all that work and come up with a solution, what they think about it, and then, by having a commission and do that work, when you come, have the power in your hands, you try to, you know, say, "No, you're wrong." I think you had five or six people on that commission that rejected it, so I would go with the people that rejected it.
Okay.
That's my, on that. And my understanding is, in the past year, that this town, public town's hearing where the first person I spoke asked to move the question. Now, he has the right to move the question. Anybody has the right to move the question, not me, because of Robert's Rules of Order gives him that right. My question is, why does Robert's Rules of Order control a town meeting, where the freedom of speech was taken away by the first person? There's nothing more important in this country than freedom of speech, and that one person used that right to take away everybody's right of speech in this town. And he had the right to do that, because of Robert's Rules of Order caused, installed by that meeting. So, I'm getting old, and I'm not gonna be able to do this all my life, but there is, I believe, a way of changing the way town meetings are run and opened by, and let people, everybody speak at a town meeting, that your right was taken away by Robert's Rules of Order. And my question to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Attorney, can that right be changed, where everybody can speak at a town meeting for a certain amount of time? Uh, can it be researched? Can it be looked up? Is it possible for that to happen? So, everybody that lives in this town has the voter meeting, that's the purpose, the voter meeting, can speak, but it can be taken away by the first person to speak. That is not fair to anybody in this town. And that's my opinion. Another thing about government is here, is trust. Everybody that runs for government are good people, but can you trust them? The answer goes to, look at the President of the United States. How many people in this country trust him? So, that guy has to go out to the big picture, out of every town, how many people trust everybody? You're all good people, but trust? Well, no. You say, you say things, you say like, "We'll build you a, we'll keen center." Ten years ago, "Yes, we'll build you a new keen center." Eighty-three, here we are, what, maybe ten, eleven, twelve years later? Not a single thing that you promised happened. So, why should I have my trust in government? There's a lot of words that are spoken, and there's a lot of words that mean nothing. And that happened here.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Duff?
Michael Duff, thirty-three Long Men Lane. Mrs. Selectmen, thank you for your patience. I'm redressing that four-year term proposal. The town meeting form of government is, is, is unique to this New England, and it's beloved by this community of Bethel. And what's really nice about it is that each board and commission is basically free to act on their own, with counsel from the Board of Selectmen, but certainly not control of the Board of Selectmen. And I feel going to a four-year term tends to drift in a direction where a consolidation of power to the Board of Selectmen would occur, and that would be contrary to the spirit of the town meeting form of government, which we cherish so much. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Did you see somebody over here?
Just to fill out-
Your name, please?
Brad Colts, one Fairchild Drive. Uh, just to fill out something Kitty said, I surveyed on the state of Connecticut, out of a hundred and sixty-nine communities, uh, ten percent have a four-year term, ninety percent have, have a two-year term, so, um, it's not quite, it's not quite as dramatic of, of, of difference on that. Just in terms of a comment, I'd, I'd like to share that, given the recent history with this not passing the last vote, time when it came up, given the work that the commission has done and their recommendations on it, um, I don't see a strong argument to overturn those things being, being put forth. I see some strong opinions being held, but I haven't actually seen a strong, uh, logical argument for the change that's being asked, that sets Bethel apart from the ninety percent of other communities that still have a two-year term. And I would just ask that if there is such an argument that hasn't been made, if you could make it, and if there isn't, that you would reconsider, uh, going forward with this, this hour.
Hmm? More comments? All right.
Your first one, I would have him-
Twenty-seven and a half, we would have him. And as this video is, is served up to the public at some point, there will be a field of the Selectmen, and there's movie voices from the peanut gallery, so to speak, right? I mean, when, I'm just looking at the video, just wondering, if anybody were watching this-
No, you're, you're up, you're in the upper-left corner.
There's gonna be somebody, they're gonna be on there, great. Oh, thank you so much. I'm just afraid that's-
Hey, Billy. Billy. It's, it's right there.
Very good, very good. All right, all right, that's it.
So, smile away.
Um, you know, I've been part of every Charter Revision, in an impactful sense, with the Bethel Action Committee since nineteen eighty-nine. In the last two Charter Revisions, I've seen more push to consolidate power in the Board of Selectmen. The pre, the last Charter Revision Commission was an outright assault on the power of the Board of Finance, and we raise these concerns. BAC has lobbied for, for, and every single Charter Revision that was put forth to the people, our organization has had a position on in X, Y, or Z, and we fought hard to keep down the, to vote down the, the five-man board and the four-year term, when it went up five years ago. And I don't see any link, I, I've heard nobody talk about the fact that the four-year term went down because it was linked to a five-man board. Um, they, they went down on its own. Both were, were horrific ideas to many of us. And when Mike Duff talked about our town meeting form of government, the genius of diffusing power, power's what gets people in trouble. We hate to see power concentrated, and it was, the bombing fathers found ways on state, national, and local level to diffuse power, so you can go to sleep at night. Even if your enemy gets political power, power is diffused. They can't do that much harm to you because of the system. We are losing that on three levels of government, where your enemies get elected, there are so much power available to them, they can, they can wreak havoc on you. So, I'm, I'm here because I'm out in the world a lot, I have a very public life, I'm in bars, I'm in diners, I'm in-
Institutions are higher learning.
I'm a musician, I go to a lot of places, and I don't hear anybody saying, "This town could be a better place if we had a couple more Selectmen, or if we had four-year terms." Nobody talks to me about enhancing the, the length of stay of an elected official. And as far as the Office of Selectmen, which I want to limit, I want to limit what the Office of Selectmen can do, just think of a Selectman. The Selectman can choose the people that are on a commission, he can shape what they're gonna talk about by giving them the charge of the commission, he can speak as an official at their meetings, then he could show up as a citizen in public and, but, I mean, how many bites of the apple can the Office of Selectmen have over the Charter Revision Commission? And I'm not saying, I'm not pointing this at you, I'm just saying, the Office of Selectmen has inordinate amount of power in the, the, in the chart, that charter is so important, this, this goes on forever, this charter. So, I am adamant and will lobby with the Bethel Action Committee what is left of a remnant of people that still understand the limitations of government that this blessed town meeting offers us. Uh, I'll fight that. And I'm, 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 I can't believe people who can't stand Trump and have to impeach him in the last four months of his, of his, uh, presidency, would entertain, "What? Suppose somebody like Trump gets elected to the Board of Selectmen, and you gotta hold him for four years?" Can you imagine what the Democrats would say? If we had a Trumpian for Selectmen, stuck for four years, they'll say, "Oh, why did we ever give them the four-year term?" And, and I will say, I will, I will take, recount what I say about the four-year term if the state gives us the power to recall. If we get recall rights on a local level, then I say, if people are so stupid, from my point of view, that they wanna elect somebody for four years, well, at least if we can get rid of them, by a recall petition, you know, I'll let people walk that path. But until we have recall power to set somebody in power for four years, that could be as bad to, "Oh, my god." No, no, anyway, thank you so much.
All right. Are you auditioning for an HBO special?
I wanted to get on the-
Comedy's not definitely-
Passionate man.
All right. Bob, you got a comment?
Bob Legon, eleven Evergreen Drive. It certainly defends the Board of Selectmen's right to send us back to the Charter Revision, but I don't see the, the need to do that. It certainly is something that hasn't been, you know, in, from anybody. It, it was all done in the open, it was all done with a great amount of debate and a great amount of back and forth. Public hearings, uh, were held, and I didn't see a great amount of support for, you know, overturning the vote of the Charter Revision Commission. Uh, so I think, you know, it would be wise not to, you know, waste any more time on this one issue, and, and, and put it back in the lap of, of, of a board that has already made a decision once to, uh, not have a four-year term. Uh, and as far as, you know, Robert's rules, I, I think we need to maintain that within the time meeting. Robert, you could, you could call a motion to, uh, end, end debate, but if there's enough people there that don't want any debate, debate continues. Thank you.
Hmm, all right, thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Yes. Philip Gallagher, fifteen Sunset Hill Road, Bethel. Uh, regarding the four-year term, I'd like to say this, I don't think I've been around Bethel a long time. I've never heard anyone say, running for post of first Selectman, that I'm not really qualified right now, but give me a year or two and I'll do a good job. Basically, that's the argument, given the extending the term to four years, that we may have, it may take me a couple of years to learn the job, but I'll do a better job. Do you think anybody run for that, on that platform? I don't think so. You got your neighboring town of Danbury, City of Danbury, city of about eighty-five, ninety thousand people, they, two-year term for mayor, the current mayor's put himself up for, I think he just got elected to his tenth term. Sometimes he's one big, sometimes small. This was one of the smaller times, but I didn't hear him saying that he should get more than two years. Uh, I think he, his records, better or worse, speaks for itself. So, I would keep the, because I, as I've said in previous meetings, the people of Bethel have shown over their history that they preserve, they prefer a two-year term, because they've turned out several first Selectmen after one term, or two terms, or three terms. Uh, we only had two, oh, two in the last fifty years that have gone for more than three terms. So, that's one item. The other item that I keep, I'm sure I sound like a broken record, and I read the minutes of the Charter Revision Commission, and that is on the issue of when we have our town meeting. And this Charter Revision Commission appears to have given another week for the Board of Finance, but it's not really helped the Board of Finance, but it's helped the Registars of Voters in setting up the, the, uh, budget election. And yet, no board has a more important decision year in and year out to make in this town than the Board of Finance, and they need more, all the time that they can legally get. I've looked on the internet, as this gentleman has over here, not, not regarding the two-year term, but the, when towns in the town of, in the state of Connecticut who have the town meeting form of government, when they have their budget referendums, overwhelmingly it's in May. We have seen also the town of, uh, nearby town of Monroe, has moved, it's used to, it was like Bethel, they went back to April for their bu, a budget vote, for their, actually, I mean, their town meeting, and they found that didn't give the Board of Finance enough time, so they moved their budget vote back to May. So, I see the Charter Revision Commission didn't agree to that, I'm, I'm happy they made some progress in giving the Board of Finance another week, but they deserve more. And, uh, I'll keep saying it till, till we move it back to the first of May, because in this state, when we have such budget uncertainty, we need all the time that this board can get. Again, I say, no board has more of a, um, big role, a big decision to make year in and year out in this town than the Board of Finance. And one last point on the first issue, on the four-year term, one argument's made is with the Board of, uh, the Planning and Zoning has four years, the Board of Ed has four years, and that's true, but there are specialized boards dealing with one issue and one responsibility. The Board of Finance, unfortunately, for better or for worse, for the three men sitting up there, they're the ones that take the blame, better or worse, or the credit for how the direction of the town, and I think that's another reason why the people consistently said they should be, uh, answerable to the people every two years. So, thank you, gentlemen. People, good work.
All right. Any other comments? Yes?
So, Bill Oaks, ten Fawn Road. Um, so, I, I'm also opposed to the four-year, uh, term, to move to that. Um, everyone's already spoken here, there's not much I can really add to that. Our form of government is working well, it has been working well, there's no really reason to change it, uh, so the two-year term for first Selectmen, I think is appropriate. Um, actually, I agree with Mr. Gallagher that we should allow for the, the maximum time. Uh, there was, what, a couple of years ago, when the state withheld the money from us, and we didn't know what was happening, and it kinda messed up stuff to know exactly the bottom line of what funds we were getting from the state, so that also hindered the Board of Finance, and you gentlemen up here to be able to make that proper, uh, assessment and choice of what we're gonna look forward. So, you know, that, I think, can be looked at again, too. Uh, thank you very much.
More, more comments?
Pauline Leeny, Jacob Lane. Um, I'm speaking as a citizen, and I'm just a person who covers news in the town of Bethel. I just want everyone to note that a lot can happen in two years or four years, big difference. And it has nothing to do with who's in office, or how well you've done, it just is that many things can happen, and you need to give people the opportunity to review who's in office. If you've done a good job, there, it would have no effect, you'll just be automatically almost a reelected, but so much can happen in four years, that I think it's too long of a time period, because even two years, a lot can happen. So, that's what I think it's about, not who's in office, or partisan, or anything like that.
Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, yeah.
And by the way, before you, before you do, I wanna, we have members of the commission here, Nick, who chaired, thank you very much, Sharon, and Teresa.
Joyce.
Joyce.
And Joyce? And Joyce? And where's?
John's not here.
John's not here, but, uh, thank you very much. Uh, this commission has worked since twenty eighteen on this, so, um, we, uh, it's a, it's always a huge undertaking, and we really appreciate your, all the, the many, 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 many hours and days you put into this. So, floor's yours, Nick, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I just wanna throw some data out there to, to go along with some of the opinions. Um, you know, one, I think I have a concern with our form of government, uh, and I think nothing shows that more than the fact that sixty to seventy percent of our legislative body chooses to not participate in our government on a typical municipal election. Our turnout numbers are thirty to thirty-three percent. The way we're designed, you know, one in three people showing up to have their voice heard, isn't a healthy government by name and any measure. You know, going off of that data, you know, that puts the first Selectmen, on the average, I've been going through a lot of the, the numbers, winning with twenty percent of the electorate backing them. So, one in five Bethelites are choosing our first select person. All right, these, these aren't opinions or loviations, it's just numbers, folks. You know, and then another piece, too, in terms of the four-year, I did not vote in favor of the four-year. Um, the only communities that have our form of government, the town meeting with a four-year, are Bridgewater, Roxbury, Andover, Sterling, Columbia, Marlboro, Durham, Hebron, East Windsor, and Ridgefield, of those ten towns. The average population of those ten towns is seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five people. If we take Ridgefield out of that, which is a, a dramatic outlier, because there are twenty-five thousand, there's some that are fewer than three thousand, it's about five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two people. So, they're much different communities that have a town meeting form of government with a four-year term for the Selectmen. Uh, mo, most of them are very rural, most of them have clearly smaller populations. Um, and then if you look at our DURG, so our District Reference Group, may not be a familiar term for people that aren't, uh, on the Board of Ed, but it's the group that they use for all of our, um, the way we're scored as a school district and the amount of money we get back. Um, so there's two, two towns, Legerd, um, things, actually, no, there's only one. Legerd, uh, which is a mayor council, and that's fifteen thousand people. So, more similar, we're about north of twenty thousand now, similar, but they have a mayor council, so a completely different form with a four-year term. And then I've also looked at our population group, so I put that from twenty thousand to thirty thousand. So, there's thirty ti, thirty towns in total in that group. So, Montville is a mayor council, uh, Ridgefield is a Selectmen Town Meeting, Westport is a Selectmen Representative Town Meeting, uh, and those are the only three that have four-year terms. And then there's thirteen that are council manager. Uh, you know, I, I could go through, I just have reams and reams of data. Our voter population has grown by nearly two thousand people in the last twenty years, and fewer people are participating in our government. You know, one of the other data pieces I looked at, just 'cause I had my own curiosity, because I've been involved with the Charter Revision before this, I'm the only member who sat on both, um, as well as my time on the Board of Ed, we have twelve people elected that are under the age of fifty in this, in the town of Bethel. We have forty-three that are fifty and over. So, my question is, who's gonna do these jobs, folks? Like, if, if we're not gonna look at the issues that are facing our town and come up with solutions proactively, you know, Connecticut's not healthy, our budget's not getting better, you know, like, we're gonna have to make some big choices, and if we're just gonna throw, right now, fiduciary responsibility is a call to action to anybody who serves on our board, and fiduciary responsibility means the measure of it is you're making a decision of a reasonable person. Right now, if we're to build a business from scratch, and we say, "This is our hiring process." We have one club on one side of town, we have one club on another side of town, there's about fifteen, twenty people in each club, they're gonna pick the person they like. Okay, maybe somebody in that club doesn't like that person, so they're gonna have an election and run against that person. By the way, neither of those clubs represent more than thirty percent of the total electorate for the town. So, those two clubs say, "All right, these are the people we want to run our town, and we're gonna send them to an election to run a multi-million, tens-of-million-dollar business, and then we're gonna choose from there who's gonna run the community." So, we're excluding the largest group, the unaffiliated voters, from even really gaining access to this process, because it's been so politicized, and now we push in two people who, there's no qualifications. One of the changes we made in the Charter Revision was to put qualifications into what the engineer would look like for the PUC. There's, there's no qualifications for the first Selectmen, none.
Correct.
And it's, it's an incredibly complex job. You know, it's not, you know, it, two farm owners debating over how much of the new stone wall intruded on somebody else's farmland, like, that's what it was designed for, and I mean, not to be, but like, it, it is an antiquated form of government. You know, like, there wasn't internet or air conditioning- You know, like, there wasn't internet or air conditioning or heated buildings without, you know, wood stove. It's like, we've changed dramatically since eighteen fifty-five. We're, we're a much different community. And to hold on to things simply because they're tradition, because it, it, it makes warm and fuzzies, or because you know how to manipulate it better to your own advantage, doesn't really make sense. And it's really a violation of fiduciary responsibility. Because it's our obligation, as people who sit on those sides of the table, is to make the best decision on behalf of the community, not the best decision on behalf of me or my kin or whatever tribe I represent. So that's the work I brought to it. And I think the board brought very similar work. But I think regardless, we need to have some bold conversations about how we are gonna govern beyond this charter revision, whether the two-year, four-year term comes back to us. We need to have these conversations just because these metrics show there's not even a bench for the people to do the work in ten or fifteen years. People aren't showing up. And it's, it's epidemic across society. We don't have civic organizations in town. Like, we're not drawing people in to come and do this work. Service is not something people are drawn to anymore, tragically. And, you know, we could go on forever about the sociological impacts of that. But, you know, we, we need to be proactive in it and we need to be prepared to put the town in the best position possible to be as healthy for as long as possible. And that's my, uh, I don't know, I guess fifty-dollar bill instead of two cents, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very well said. Thank you.
Patrisse, Ten Shelter Rock Road. Uh, I had gone to a few of the Charter Revision Commission meetings, and there were two individuals that voted against, uh, they wanted to vote, I saw, I apologize. Two people voted for the four-year term, the balance voted against. And just as we-
It was four, three.
We're agreeing. Just as we, on planning and zoning, have to recuse ourself, when we have, uh, an application before us that we might personally be enmeshed in, we have to step aside. We cannot participate. So what I would like to say, and Sharon, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say this-
That's okay.
-that I think Sharon should have recused herself from that particular portion of the discussion regarding the four-year term because she's personally enmeshed with, with the outcome of the meeting.
Well, it didn't pass anyway.
It didn't matter anyway. No, no, but I'm just saying. We have to look at all of it.
Right. Other, any other comments? All right, thank you all for those. Um, there's been an awful lot of commentary that I would, uh, you know, and questions that I would very much like to address and discuss with you. Tonight's not the night, though. This is a night for input. Uh, we're gonna save that for, uh, for the public hearing. And I would look forward to, um, uh, answering questions and, and discussing, possibly adding more information that you may or may not already know on all of the questions that you've posed tonight. Um, and I, I relish it, I look forward to it. I think we could have a good disc- Pardon me?
Why, why are you doing it? You're, you're still the king. You wanna see this? You're, 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 you're damn to do this. Not for you. It's his now. It's ours. No, it's theirs. This is-
I, I said we're-
Let it go. It's state-of-the-art ability, fine. It goes to them, they do a public hearing, it comes back to us. We've done-
Well, it, it could come back to them.
It's a public experience in my life. This is the first charter you've been on.
Okay, all right, public input is over, all right?
I'm sorry, I gave you so much access to your government. I apologize. It's my fault.
All right, that's, public input is done. Thank you very much. Um, this is probably gonna be the most anti, anti-traumatic meeting charter that you've had, 'cause really, all we're gonna do is set, unless my colleagues have any comments that they wanna share, we're really gonna set the date for the public hearing.
I, I'd just like to make one, one comment here tonight. I'd like to thank the Charter Revision Commission for the effort that they put in. I've sat on one, I know the time. And, you know, when you think about, when you sit on the Charter Revision Commission, and I don't wanna equate this to the Constitution, but the framers, basically, you guys were the framers of saying, "What is public consent?" And I think, uh, basically, as I read your, your summations, you've sort of come to pretty much the consent of what the people want. And, uh, this is complimentary to everybody who sat on there. And, uh, I, I, I share your concern, too, Nick, about the number of people that don't vote, the number of people that don't, uh, participate in public service. And part of it is, I, I, I guess it's a, the society that we live in today, we no longer live in town, everybody's commuting and all, and time is always of essence to each individual. But then again, to you, thank you for the effort, everybody, that entire committee put into this. Thanks again.
Thank you. Rich, anything?
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Hi. Marty, what's the timeline for this point? Uh, 'cause we, the Board of Selectmen accepted this on December twenty-third, I think, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-third was the, was the-
That's the date that I use. You have forty-five days left. Like, one or more public hearings with the last one being on the forty-fifth day.
All right, hold on just a second. I'm going to, um, I, I wanna give a, a lot of time to publicize this, so I'm gonna recommend Monday, January twenty-seventh, which is thirty, I think I counted thirty-three days since the twenty-third. Thirty-four days.
I'll return it for you.
Um, Dan, do you, are you aware of any, any conflict with that? I, I don't have anything on my calendar. Okay?
What time?
Seven to four? I'll make a motion that, oh-
That, there's a big hearing that night in, in, like, Wetlands.
It's a big hearing.
Is that, is that on Good Hill?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's gonna be down in the GP room.
How about Tuesday, the twenty-eighth? Is that, your meetings, your, your hearings are usually on Tuesdays, don't they?
In the wetlands.
Oh, in, in the wetlands, okay, all right.
See, ours is the twenty, ours is the twenty-eighth.
Okay, twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth, seven?
Okay.
Oh, I mean, that's when we're supposed to have the Board of Finance, where we can-
Over the weekend.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's a regular meeting, we can work with that.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll make a motion that we establish the public hearing on Charter Revision for Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
Oh, no, we don't have Board of Finance, I'm sorry. Never, I'm sorry, it popped up, it just, it-
I, I thought they had a special, all right, that's, all right.